Good afternoon and welcome to the President's Fall Town Meeting. It is now my pleasure to introduce the 18th President of Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, Dr. Shirley Ann Jackson.
Well, good afternoon and welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming, including those watching using the live stream link. You know, since I last spoke with you in the spring, a great deal of happy evidence has appeared confirming that the world appreciates the work that we do here at Rensselaer. First, we have seen an extraordinary demand from incoming students. And while we had intended that the class of 2020 to comprise slightly over 1,500 students, so many decided to attend Rensselaer this year that we welcomed nearly 1,700, 1,691, into our freshman class, all of them with very strong academic qualifications. And so, as I said to our faculty earlier this morning, the faculty meeting, I thank you for everything you've done to welcome and to make room and accommodate these talented young people. As you know, we have seen our ranking among national universities in U.S. News and World Report rise to number 39. However, such rankings depend on rough measures that sometimes attempt to describe what are indescribable qualities. So what we try to remain focused on are outcomes, outcomes of the research our faculty perform and outcomes for our students. And if you look at these outcomes in terms of the salaries our students command when they graduate, the graduate schools that admit them, the original and confident work they do in the world, and the leadership they just demonstrate in a wide variety of fields. And if you look at the impact of our research and our teaching, those outcomes speak for themselves. Now, I'm going to introduce, as I usually do, members of the leadership team who are here. And I would just ask them to stand. And I'll start with Jerry Matthews, who's our Director of Public Safety, our CFO and Vice President for Information Services and Technology, John Kolb, who also is a Rensselaer alum, as you may know, our Vice President for Administration, Claude Brown, Vice President for Institute Advancement, Greg Easton, our Dean of the School of Architecture, Evan Douglas, Vice President for Enrollment, John Wexler, our Vice Provost and Dean of Graduate Education, Stan Dunn, Vice President and Dean of Undergraduate Education, Lynda Shadler, the Dean of Science, Kurt Brenneman, our Director of Athletics, Lee McElroy, our Secretary of the Institute and General Counsel, Craig Cook, our Vice President for Student Life, Frank Ross, Vice President for Administration, Curtis Powell, our Provost, Prabhat Hjala, our CFO and Vice President for Finance, Jenny Gregg, Dean of the LaLle School of Management, Tom Begley, Dean of Engineering, Shaker Garday, the Director of our Center for Biotechnology and Interdisciplinary Studies, Deepak Bhushan, the Dean of our School of Humanities, Arts and Social Sciences, Mary Simone, and our Vice President for Strategic Communications and External Relations, Richie Hunter. And fairly new in the President's office... What are your names? Jen Brock and Paula Realbeuto. I'm losing my mind. So, you know, here at Rensselaer, we've embraced our long history as a polytechnic. And at the same time, we've been recasting our approach within a paradigm that we call the New Polytechnic. And why that? Well, the first, as you've heard me say on other occasions, we have the advent of powerful new tools and technologies that help us understand things. They come from and arise in fields as broad-ranging as high-performance and cognitive computing, data analytics, and genomics. And why those? It's because their usefulness spans many fields of endeavor. And second are the contemporary challenges that we face, whether they have to do with our food, water, and energy, our changing climate, disease mitigation, and human health broadly writ, the allocation of natural resources, our increasing need for sustainable infrastructure, and of course, national and global security. In the end, these challenges are networked and sprawling. And in fact, I often talk about intersecting vulnerabilities with cascading consequences. And one example of that that we've seen recently has to do with how technology always exists on a knife edge. You look at the linking of so many things through the Internet of Things and the fact that malware can be introduced to link these and have them themselves become the basis of distributed denial-of-service attacks that obviously affected us here in this country very broadly, but also have effects around the world. And so, the very things that give rise to great opportunity are things that also can create vulnerabilities that if we don't think about and deal with them properly, do have cascading consequences. But that then means we take new approaches to deal with them where, you know, we can't just work within a single discipline or even sector or even nation or geographic region. And so, as the New Polytechnic, our intent is to become a great crossroads for collaborations across all borders using the advanced tools and technologies at our disposal and to educate our students with attributes that we believe will equip them well for the future, having to do with true intellectual agility, multicultural sophistication, and a global view. Now, it takes resources to realize such a vision. And so, I'm going to spend the moment on our finances, which are fundamentally sound. You know, we develop and present to the Board of Trustees each year a cash-based operating budget. And we balance that budget and live within it every year. In fact, we forecast every quarter. And all of the leaders you see develop contingency plans to deal with any changes that we have to absorb. We actually have a stable market position. We have improved operating performance, stronger debt service coverage, and stable investments even in a volatile market. In fact, in our most recent updates, both S&amp;P and Moody's, and they evaluate us every year, have given Rensselaer an A rating, and Moody's even upgraded our outlook. Now, they actually have talked themselves of important factors that make Rensselaer a good investment, including strong demand from students. But we do have, however, a legacy defined benefit pension plan. That pension plan actually dates from the 1950s. It was closed in 1993 to new entrants. But it is one that we have and that we intend to and in fact do honor and fund as necessary. But that has put a strain on university finances. But because people, you know, who've served Rensselaer very faithfully over a number of years rely on that pension, it's one that we work very assiduously to maintain. We also are strengthening and plan to further strengthen our finances with a capital campaign, which is now in its initial quiet phase. And the focus of the campaign is really threefold. First, to enable us to strengthen our resources for financial aid, to close the financial aid gap so that we can draw the very best students regardless of their socioeconomic backgrounds and support them and close the financial aid gap. The second is to allow us to expand our tenured and tenure-track faculty. And we want to get that number to 500. And that would be at the core of a larger number that would include lecturers and senior lecturers and professors of practice. But we need to be able to support new faculty chairs to be able to recruit and retain the best faculty. And third, we have to continue to upgrade our existing facilities as well as needed to construct new state-of-the-art facilities. And all of this is predicated on building an endowment, a stronger, larger endowment, especially one that relates to financial aid and to faculty support. You know, we end up competing and competing successfully with universities that have much larger endowments. My own alma mater has an endowment that's more than twice ours. Our endowment is about $650 million. And MIT's endowment is on the order of $13.7 billion. They feel they are poor relative to Harvard. But be that as it may, we do a lot with the resources that we have. And we plan and budget very stringently. And sometimes that stringency people feel, but it is how we make progress. But as we do that, we're intent on continuing to hire tenured and tenure-track faculty to support our research thrusts and to strengthen the student experience and to strengthen that experience in every aspect. We are reorganizing and essentially have reorganized, although it's not totally complete because we have positions to fill. We're reorganizing our division of student life. And we're creating five key departments or areas, four of which will be led by Assistant Vice Presidents because this is a huge portfolio. And in the process, we're looking to break down silos. But these focus on key aspects of student life here. First is the new student transitions area, which includes pipeline initiatives, student summer orientation, transfer services, the Office of the Registrar, the Center for Career and Professional Development, and with the advent of the Summer Arch, a focus on the Summer Arch. And so, if you think about what that means, it's about how you would prepare to come into Rensselaer or a school like Rensselaer. It's how you actually do come in and get oriented if you transfer in to service what you need. But then you have to formally be part of the university and matriculate, hence the Registrar. But it also is about preparing students to move out into the world as they pivot from a more internal focus to an external one. That's what the Summer Arch is about. And as they move out into the world. And that's what the Center for Career and Professional Development is about. The second arena is student success, which encompasses the Office of the Dean for Student Success, the Dean of the First Year Experience, the other undergraduate class deans, and the Archer Center for Student Leadership Development. And we talk about lifting to success for students who need support. And we talk about building success on success, which is the case for most of our students and even some of those who early on need support and help them to grow. The third is the campus experience that oversees our living, learning environments that include our residential halls, affiliated Greek housing, and what we refer to as the off-campus commons, those looking after students who live off the campus. It also includes the student rights responsibilities and judicial affairs, and of course, the Rensselaer Union. Now, with this new arrangement here, our goal is actually to increase, create greater synergies among all parts of the student experience. And as we do that, we are intent on strengthening, you know, the unique and historic student-run union. And we recognize its importance. That's one of the defining characteristics of the student experience. The fourth is what we call Student Support and Resource Centers. And that includes student health and wellness. That includes the Health Center, the Counseling Center, the Athletic Trainers. It also includes a focus on those who have served and are preparing to serve and are serving in our military. So we have veteran and military student services. We have religious affairs and multicultural programs. And those range everywhere from underrepresented minority students, folksite, to students who come from abroad, to LGBTQ students and others. And then, of course, the fifth area is NCAA athletics under the leadership of Associate Vice President and Director of Athletics, Lee McElroy. We also, as we are doing all of this, are reinforcing class or clustered learning advocacy and support for students. And we do this to focus on the developmental needs of our students as they progress through their years here at the Institute and to connect students more strongly to each other, to Rensselaer and to the surrounding community. I mentioned a bit ago the off-campus commons. And that's been a concept and a looking at the students who live proximate to the campus. But we're now going to establish an off-campus commons on 15th and College Avenue as a physical place. And this is a spot where off-campus students will gather to participate in class-based programs, to take breaks between classes as they would like, to hold events, or to even catch a safe ride home. And we'll be starting a safe ride service. We're trying to launch it in the next semester, but it will certainly be in place by the beginning of the next academic year. Because of concerns about safety, we have already expanded the shuttle routes and expanded the hours for the shuttle. Now, in the classroom, we've always been and remain extremely innovative in the way we teach. And again, we encourage the use of tools that cross disciplines. So, for example, given the fact that we believe that given the power of big data, that data analysis and literacy will be a requirement soon in all fields. And I see that as I'm about and I do advisory things for the government as well as being involved with major corporations that are multinational. So we've begun incorporating data analysis and data literacy into our mathematics classes through an approach we call DATUM or Data Analytics Through Undergraduate Mathematics. And I've talked before of how last year a group of DATUM students created a model of the emergence of different layers of the cerebral cortex in a human embryo and then combined this with data about brain diseases. And with that, they came upon an unexpected insight into the stage of brain development where the Zika virus causes microcephaly in really unborn babies, which then becomes manifested upon birth. And that hypothesis subsequently was strengthened by experiments that were done on neural stem cells. But then they are teaching innovations that arise directly out of the research and activity taking place here in fields such as artificial intelligence, in gamification and immersive technologies of all kinds. And so, you know, we do these things because we think that cyber and digitally-enabled learning and discovery and immersion help our students to master a body of knowledge by exploring it through different modalities. In fact, at Rensselaer at Hartford, we're taking a blended learning approach to education for working professionals, combining online and campus instruction. And we expect to expand that way of approaching both graduate education and where appropriate undergrad. You've heard me speak before for undergraduates about the Mandarin Project, where we look to teach the Mandarin Chinese language and culture. And it initially is predicated on gamification and mixed-reality immersive environments. And it engages the students by making them players in a semester-long group game narrative and uses the mixed-reality immersive environments to recreate the experience of being in another place, such as the Beijing Airport and a Chinese teahouse. But we're looking and working to incorporate into that course natural language processing and interactions with intelligent, artificially intelligent digital characters that will compel our students to use their newly-developing language skills even more resourcefully. Now, we find that our students learn more quickly with this approach and are expanding it and intend to expand a number of these ideas to other courses as well. But in this case, we began, and it's been a long stretch, but we began with the language course because it helps us ultimately to answer a challenging question, which is how do you immerse students in a new culture as they're learning a language without immediately sending them off on an airplane? And we do that recognizing that many of our students do jump on airplanes and go abroad. But for those where, you know, we're moving them into that and in a world where our students will be expected to collaborate across geographies as well as disciplines and sectors, it is important that the experience we provide even in a simulated, gamified environment spans cultures as well as ideas. Now, we're now into our second year of another unique pedagogical innovation, ArtX at Rensselaer, which is designed to help our students to see and to understand the science in and of art and the art in and of science, but importantly, to explore the ideas that connect art, science, and technology. And this is about helping all of our students acquire a new vocabulary for creativity, new ways of thinking about situations. And our faculty are infusing it throughout the curriculum. You know, you've heard me speak about the Capstone Design Class taken by seniors in engineering and where students don't just address the things, you know, they historically must address, function, cost, safety, performance, but also aesthetics and how these aesthetics can both help and sometimes conflict with other considerations. But ArtX as well, you know, has become an important part of the student experience. And we want it to be more so outside the classroom. For example, we encourage students to take full advantage of the productions developed and presented here at the Curtis R. Priam Experimental Media and Performing Arts Center, or IMPACT, which is one of the most advanced performing arts and research venues in the world, which draws remarkable artists and scientists from around the world. And a new program that's called IMPACT+ offers free tickets to all IMPACT-curated events to students who enroll. And with this exposure to the arts, we really hope to open the aperture. Interestingly enough, we just had a standing-room-only lecture at the Center for Biotechnology and Interdisciplinary Studies by Tom Chek, who's a Nobel Prize winner in chemistry for unique insights he developed about RNA as a biologically catalytic agent that affects genetic mutations and other changes in, you know, the human cells at a fundamental level. And obviously, he was impressed by the biotechnology and interdisciplinary studies center. But he was totally astounded by what he saw at IMPACT, not just from the point of view that it's beautiful, but in terms of its technologies and capabilities. So that was interesting hearing it from him. But what's interesting equally so is you've heard me talk about this being the Curtis R. Priam Experimental Media and Performing Arts Center, although we shortened that to IMPACT. And Curtis is a Rensselaer alum who actually was one of the founders of the company Nvidia. I'm sure most of you have heard of it. And that's because he developed the original graphics processor on which the company was built. But he was also a member of the Rensselaer Orchestra. He played an instrument when he was here and he felt that was a really important part of his developing his creative juices. And so, he wanted to help us do this. Now, we've had a longstanding leadership in the electronic arts. And we're expanding on that by developing a new Bachelor of Science in Music. It has not been fully approved yet, but we're moving down that line. And as you might expect, it will also have a strong technological focus. It will certainly be rooted in the fundamentals of music. But it also will play as well into and out of ArtX at Rensselaer. We've also invited students to be part of the research done by our faculty in remarkable ways, including at the Jefferson Project at Lake George. You know, that project is using that very beautiful lake to create a new data and science-driven approach to freshwater conservation and ultimately to overall environmental stewardship. And so, to better understand the lake and its systems, the Jefferson Project generates and employs enormous amounts of streaming observational data being provided by 41 different sensor platforms, which include weather stations, tributary stations, floating vertical profilers, and sonar-based current monitors, some of them invented here just for that purpose. And so, it incorporates sophisticated data analytics, data visualization, computationally-based modeling and simulation, and both lab-based and lake-based experimentation to test and confirm hypotheses. But let me tell you about one kind of new aspect of the cross-disciplinary work that is taking place around the Jefferson Project. A project led by Professor Charles Stewart, who is head of our Department of Computer Science and who happens to be an expert in computer vision, is automating the identification of the freshwater species of plankton. And this is from images taken by a specialized camera that is towed through Lake George. Now, as you know, plankton are minuscule and they're drifting organisms, but they're at the very base of the food web. And they're indicators of big things such as water quality. And so, this work has inspired the Game of Plankton, which is an interactive 3D game designed to engage participants with the life in the lake at different scales, including the microscopic scale of plankton. And as our understanding of Lake George develops, the game will allow its participants to explore the ways that different and to explore the ways that different environmental conditions and human encroachments alter the biology of the lake. It is rigorously informed by science and is quite a remarkable teaching tool for anyone who plays it. And the effort of creating it has been a remarkable learning experience for many of our undergraduate game designers, animators, artists, composers, architects, and computer scientists who have worked on it thus far. So the gamification and what we do with the linkage of art and science is not just about the Mandarin Project and is not just about the usual kind of class. But possibly, our most transformative teaching innovation is the Summer Arch, which involves a restructuring of the academic calendar. But it does change that calendar, and through the Summer Arch, students will remain on the summer, on the Troy campus after the sophomore year for a full semester in the summer of junior-level classes. And then they will spend one semester of the traditional junior year away from the campus, pursuing a project aligned with their interests, but still graduate within the typical timeframe. Next summer, we will be piling the program with rising juniors from our schools of engineering, from the School of Engineering and the Lally School of Management, based on certain academic qualifications and who choose the program. In the next summer, the summer of 2018, the Summer Arch will be offered to qualifying students from all five schools. But then, beginning in the summer of 2019, the Summer Arch will become the academic calendar and approach, and will be a requirement for all students. Now, we expect both peers of the Summer Arch to benefit our students greatly because during their summer here in Troy, they will profit from the focused attention of our faculty and our student-life professionals at a key point in their educational careers before they pivot to even more advanced classes. And they will take advantage as well of unique cultural, environmental, and professional experiences that are only available in this region in the summers. But then during their away semester, those juniors will do a co-op or internship or research or volunteer or an entrepreneurial business experience, or it could be some combination of all of that. And we will strongly encourage and facilitate their going abroad in order to foster a greater appreciation and understanding of the global environment within which their careers will unfold. Now, in fact, our faculty and my own leadership team are leading the way. And just this past year, our faculty members, deans, and members of my cabinet have visited countries in Asia, Africa, Europe, South America, and the Middle East to pursue opportunities and partnerships that will be significant to the Summer Arch. In fact, our provost, later this academic year, will be participating in a program in Israel to develop stronger partnerships there. Now, the institute as a whole will benefit as well from the Summer Arch in that it will allow us to make more rational year-round use of our Troy campus and infrastructure and will allow us to educate more students without straining our facilities because the junior, full junior class will not be on campus at all times. But I think those of us who are here year-round will appreciate the additional liveliness on the Troy campus in the summers. We also benefit because when our students return to campus after their semester's away, they will have grown, they will have had unique new experiences, and they will be able to forge new connections among people and ideas. And then when they graduate, and everyone I've talked to is thrilled about this, when they graduate, we expect them to be in even greater demand with employers and with graduate schools, although our students already are in great demand. We also expect them, in the end, to be what Rensselaer alumni and alumni have been for 200 years: thoughtful and empathetic, people who are able to solve the really hard problems and in the end, change the world. And so those are my remarks. And now I'm happy to address any questions that you have. Thank you. Please.
So, Dr. Jackson, I wanted to thank you for hosting this town hall. Thank you for hosting this town hall. I also, I don't know if everyone knows this, but recently, the stipend for graduate students was increased. I also wanted to thank you for that.
That was a really big increase. So I kind of had two related questions. In the Rensselaer Plan 2024, it calls for an increase in PhD students to 1,600 students. So what's being done to expand the number of graduate students? And then the somewhat connected question to that, I know that some programs or departments have endowments themselves. Is there any work being done at individual programs or department endowments to support graduate students that way?
Right. Well, thank you for those questions. It's interesting. I did just talk to a general faculty meeting this morning. We talked as well about growing particularly the number of PhD students. And I think there are kind of two avenues with regard to that. One is that most graduate PhD students at most research universities are supported very strongly on research assistantships that come from the sponsored research grants that faculty themselves garner. And so we had a straightforward discussion about that at the general faculty meeting, that one of the keys to growing the number of PhD students rests with that. Having said that, and I talk very strongly about financial aid for undergraduates, but one of the actual key streams in the capital campaign that, you know, we're hoping to launch next year is actual endowment support for fellowships for graduate students. And so we look to do both of those things. Now, what was the second part of your question?
So the second part of the question was the department-level endowments?
Yeah. Well, what happens is when you do a capital campaign anyway, we have these big streams, these big themes. But how they actually play out relates to having proposals that get put together. Because what one has to do to have a successful campaign is to match donor interests with the university needs. And those needs within those themes and within our big focal areas will naturally play through departments and schools. And frankly, you know, we look to endow whole schools here if we can get a donor with those kinds of means. And so, you know, those things are naturally built in to how we actually structure a capital campaign. Greg, would you like to make any comments along these lines? I know I covered everything, but you can.
Actually--
There's a mic there.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson.
Actually, everything she said about building in the streams for fellowships and overall endowment across the university is certainly a strategic element. One of the things that we are doing is that we're assessing capacity of donors out there in the community that would actually take on transformational projects, like some, like endowments for specific initiatives and areas. And so that's one of the things that we do in any capital planning. We look at our donor base, and a majority of the donor base, in this case, is the alumnus that have graduated, the alumni that have graduated. And so we're actually now meeting with them and really starting the process, the process, and discussion around those bigger initiatives. So thank you for asking that question. It's nice to hear something around fundraising because that certainly is what will address the needs going into the next century. So thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. My question pertains to a recent article in Reuters that discusses a series of allegations made against the international admissions, I'm not sure how you call it, a company called Depont Education Management Group. It has, according to Reuters, engaged in unethical practices, among those being using its nonprofit wing to give large endowments to particular schools in order to gain, kind of game the system a little bit. Since we're going to have this large fundraising operation going forward, will anything be done to make sure that these admissions companies aren't able to affect admissions in any way?
Well, you'd be surprised at how little affects admissions other than the qualification of the students. And I'll say two things because that's an important issue because people worry about it here. We turn down gifts if we believe, and I turn them down, that they come from unsavory sources. And that can be unsavory individuals as well as entities. And so, you know, we have a whole process that has to do with due diligence on sources of gifts. We have a requirement having to do with avoiding conflicts of interest. And in fact, all of the leadership, all of the Board of Trustees, you know, we all have to sign on to that. In New York, you know, the state attorney general reviews this as well. And our fundraising activities, policies, and our adherence to those are audited on a regular cycle by our auditors. They're called internal auditors, but that really means they audit our internal processes, but they're actually an external firm. Curtis, I don't know if you or John Wexler want to say anything about those things. About our, you can talk maybe about our conflict of interest, and Wex, about, you know, some of the specificity of his question.
Just talk.
Okay. Yeah, we have a very thorough conflict of interest process. And in that process, we have an institute-wide committee that consists of a lot of the individuals you see here on this front row to review those. In addition to that, there's a committee of the Board of Trustees that we report any conflicts to, and they review those as well. So I think so far, it's a very good process that we look at. We even bring in an external firm to review the conflicts that may exist here on this campus.
Right. But Wex, maybe you can talk specifically to the admissions.
Hi. On the admissions side, the company you're talking about, one thing to know, it got bought out two years ago. So the situations for the conference were, let's say, four years ago, and it's a new company now. They're using the same name, but it's run differently. In regards to that, when that article appeared, we did look into it, and we've taken no students in the last two years through that channel. So, and even if we did, they would have had to go through the admissions process, and the International Admissions Office reviews it, and then it goes through a whole committee. So then more than one person reviews any application file, and it goes against, it's looked at where they're applying from, programs, and all the way through. So no one person would ever have complete control to go through and admit someone in any way. So there's a whole process in place. And if there is anything from any conflict, that person, A, I don't think they'd be involved in it, but if they were, they would, in that case, they would not be reviewing that file. It would be another member of the staff.
Right. So we try to build in it in both ways, and we also have required procedures relative to gift acceptance. And so there are gift acceptance policies that have things built in, and those are the things as well that are audited every year by an external firm.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. I think up there, someone had a question.
So I've heard a lot of concerns about the Summer Arch and how, from myself and other students, about how it's going to be implemented. Some specific ones are that, so it's, from my understanding, it's mandatory on-campus housing for all students, including Greeks. And also the fact that you're going to have juniors not being on campus for that full semester, that takes away a lot of the leadership that Greek houses rely on from their junior class, and also the dues and all of that from the junior class. I was wondering if you could address some of those issues, also if the, if the resident, the on-campus residence halls will be updated with stuff like air conditioning, so they'll be livable during summer.
We're working on that. Frank, I think Frank will address this question.
Good question, very good question. So obviously, we're in the planning process for the Summer Arch, which--
Can you hold it up a little more?
Sure. Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you. So lots of folks from across the university are involved in the planning process for the Summer Arch. And as we're getting ready to start the pilot program next summer, and then the subsequent summer will be the second pilot program, there's a lot that we'll learn along the way, obviously. But one of our commitments has been that our students living in residence in the summer will have air-conditioned residence halls, and our colleagues in the administrative division are working on renovation of our residential facilities as we speak to make sure that's happening. By design, the Summer Arch was to ensure that our entire cluster of rising junior students would live in residence during the summer, and that's philosophically something that's foundational to the program, is something that we feel is very important. Your question asked about Greek leaders, and so we realize that that's a consideration. We've engaged IFC and panel and council members throughout the planning process. Actually, last fall, we sent a team of folks from the university, faculty, staff, and then students as well, to both Dartmouth College and Northeastern University, which have similar away programs that we looked at and modeled our Summer Arch program on. But really, to find out how they develop these programs on their campus, we sent teams of students to both of those campuses and made sure, again, that IFC and panel and council members were included, as well as other student leaders, because we wanted them to ask peer on those campuses, how does student leadership work on your campuses? And that's one of the items we're figuring out now. So I can tell you, from Dartmouth and Northeastern, we learned quite a bit. We learned that one size does not fit all and that different organizations handle leadership transitions differently. And so some organizations may have co-presidents. And so if one of your president is away for a co-term experience, for example, the other president may be there. We also found that many organizations utilize technology, which is something that we anticipate we would do as well, so that if presidents were away during that time, they could still engage with the organization via technology. Obviously, if you're a president of a fraternity chapter, being away may not be ideal, and we understand that. So I've been having regular meetings with members of the Alumni Integrate Council and continue to have those monthly meetings. And in fact, we have a meeting with the full council this weekend, and that's something that we continue to discuss, to look at how the individual chapters will handle the leadership process and leadership transition when Summer Arch is implemented. Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Other questions?
Would you take some time to elaborate on your vision of expanding off-campus programs and resources to the students?
Well, we already have a dean of the off-campus commons who, you know, whose job it is to look after the welfare and development of the students. Secondly, you know, we try to, you know, help to the extent we can relative to student housing and so on. But we're creating this physical off-campus commons so that there really is a place, you know, beyond the union, that the students who don't live on the campus can feel they can spend time, but also for us to have a focused place where we can have class-related programming. At the same time, we think there's a utility to using such a place and space to have the person, have students have a safe stopover point, particularly if they don't happen to live on the campus. And, you know, it's kind of at the other end of 15th Street from where the union is. And then we would be looking to have, you know, a messaging-based or tweet-based or some kind of based system for students to request rides if they need-- some kind of based system for students to request rides if they need them, if they're nervous or they live in a place where, you know, they're worried about that. And so, you know, we're looking at how to provide that transportation. And we would have some students, you know, on-call, but with one of the deans, one of the student life deans, to be able to be there for expanded hours, maybe not all night, but maybe till two or three, two to three or four in the morning. And so that people can feel they can have a safe passage while also extending the shuttle routes and extending the hours that they run. And we've already begun that. You know, we did that within about a month ago. And Claude, I don't know if you want to say anything about any of that.
As Dr. Jackson's indicated, we've already extended one of the shuttle routes to include some different streets that are highly populated with Rensselaer students. But in concert with the discussion on the safe ride, we are also planning forward to do other shuttle improvements that would include extended hours and late-night hours that would touch on the Rensselaer campus and some of the popular spots downtown. So it's part of an integrated plan that we have to provide a safer campus, but more importantly, to provide a safer environment off-campus, because we know that's where a lot of the activity occurs.
And we're looking at improvements to the RPI guardian system, you know, looking at how public safety is deployed to have them kind of more out in a community-based way. We're looking at more call boxes, including on the periphery of the campus, as well as working with the city, to have more of them extend out into the neighborhoods, as well as the use of more technology and cameras and things like that. And so all of those things, to be able to have students be more in touch with us or with someone, so that they know that there is a link if they're out and alone, that they can use this expanded shuttle, even improving the shuttle tracking system and so forth. And so a big focus of the off-campus, focus that we're doing it right as we speak, has to do with safety. But as we open this new off-campus commons center, then we'll have more class-related programming, as well as it being a link into the safety. There was an incident at the beginning of the school year, and I met with some of the young ladies involved and visited their sorority. And there were things that we decided to do immediately, and then I formed a task group involving a number of my vice presidents to ask them to do certain, very specific things, that, some of which you're now hearing about. And so that's kind of where we are. No, thank you. Well, let me see if someone else wants to talk first. Someone up here.
So you're probably going to read about this in the next week or two, but the Poly has found that Troy's crime rates have declined significantly over the past five years. How has RPI contributed to that trend?
Well, we have more of you here. I think that we have been deliberate about extending our activities into downtown Troy, where, you know, we have more of our, not just more of our students, but more people who work here. We've played an important role in either being involved ourselves or leasing renovated space, and therefore spurring that kind of renovation, and also being deliberate about helping to attract and retain more entrepreneurial activities. You know, typically, one of the greatest impacts on crime is being able to improve the economic circumstances, you know, of a city, as well as activity in the city, and improve its overall tax base. But we also do work directly with hiring people from the city to do certain things, as well as with projects we do, hiring more local contractors. And so by helping to bring people to the city, to have more safety enhancements vis-à-vis our students being out in the city, and overall, helping to improve the economic base, both in terms of employing people who live here, you know, leasing space in downtown, putting more of our activity. We think all of these things make a difference. I mean, and so I think that's increasingly recognized by people. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to you. And then we'll get the young man who wanted his second question up there.
So last semester, I had a productive conversation with Dean Brenneman regarding issues with the Counseling Center, principally as they relate to LGBT students, feeling that when they go to the Counseling Center, they aren't getting what they would need from it. Has anything come of that? Has any progress been made on that front?
I would say so, but I'll let Frank speak to that.
Thank you for that question. Last spring, there was actually an article that the Poly had written about that very topic, and looking at counseling and health services broadly, but specifically, there was a focus on LGBT students. And one of the students that led that charge is actually in the audience, Nick Thompson, thank you. And he actually got a number of student government leaders together, and we had several productive meetings where it was important for me to hear what were the issues that students were experiencing. And really, what was identified primarily was access to services, so the number of counselors that were available for students broadly, and the wait times. And that was one of the main questions. Also in that conversation, we did talk about LGBT issues, and really, there was a focused conversation on trans identified students, and is the university providing adequate counseling and health services for our trans identified students? What was really great about that is we then had a subsequent meeting with a number of students, and we had folks from the Health Center there, our director of counseling that was there as well, where we talked openly about these issues. And so we committed to a number of things. One of the items that we did was increase the number of counseling staff that we have on campus. We've added both a counselor as well as a nurse practitioner for this fall to really help. Then we've also, we're mandating a training for all of our staff in the health and counseling area around LGBT issues, and again, focusing specifically on trans issues and how it impacts our students, to ensure that all of our providers are providing excellent care for our students. We also realized that we, as a university, are limited in the medical services that we do provide, and we're looking at partnering with local community organizations that do provide healthcare for trans identified students to work a partnership with them. And that's something I've done successfully on other campuses, and I know Dr. Lawrence is leading that right now. But in addition, I know that the Student Life Committee of our Student Senate does have a focused area on counseling services this year, and they're doing a lot of work in partnership with us this year. So I anticipate you're going to see more improvements as we go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
And, you know, your question naturally leads into the question of this being a welcoming and an open campus for all students and all members of our community, faculty, staff, and students. And so one thing I'm going to ask all of you all to think about as well has to do with multicultural students, with underrepresented minority students, and whether you make this a welcoming campus for them, and as well for women. We are not immune from issues of sexual assault. We have strengthened our processes in that regard, and will continue to do so. So when we think about, you know, one group, let's think about all groups. We have students who come here from abroad, from many different cultural and religious backgrounds. And so, you know, we intend for all of them to have a true Rensselaer experience. But the only way that happens is that we all kind of come out from where we are to being, you know, comprehensive in how we treat all members of our community with dignity and respect, and with sensitivity relative to whatever their circumstances may be. Please.
So I have two separate questions. Would you like them at the same time or one after the other?
You just might as well get them all, both of them up here. I'll try to remember.
So first one, I think it's back sophomore year, there's a string of break-ins, I think in Blitman, that caused, and that led to changes in the security, campus security policy, where you could only enter through one door, and it was no longer that if you were on freshman year, you could get into all the other dorms. And if you, from my experience with that, I feel like that has actually made the campus less safe, in that it's much easier to piggyback now, because you know exactly which door people are going to be going through. And also, it's a lot less questionable to not be able to get into a dorm, because you don't have access to it, because you don't live there, whereas before, you should have been able to get there if you had an RPI, if you had an ID. And I was wondering if these policies were being looked at, because I feel like they're, first of all, causing inconvenience to students, and second of all, they're not solving the problem that they're supposed to address.
And what's your second question?
The second question is that computer science has grown, has doubled in the past however many years, but the amount of faculty, the amount of professors has not, I was wondering if the additional tenured track professors that you said you're planning on getting, if any of those would be in computer science to keep up with the amount of students that are entering in that major?
Well, let me answer the first question first, I mean, the second question first. The answer is, of course, we are hiring more computer science faculty every year, and intend to do that. And we also look at questions about enrollment, and frankly, to what extent we might have to limit or not enrollment. We're trying not to do that, but we are. And probably our two largest departments today are mechanical aerospace and nuclear engineering, and in the School of Science, computer science. But we know those are in great demand, and they're very important areas. And so as we look to hire our faculty, we do look at that. But the world does shift as well, and so one wants to be sure that we hire the faculty across the spectrum that we need to hire. We also are looking at other ways to handle extremely large enrollment classes. And in a minute, I'm going to let Kurt Brenneman make a few comments about that. But on the issue about universal access, no, we're not about to change that at this moment. There's no point in my sort of pretending that we're looking to do that. I've not seen evidence brought to me that it has exacerbated a problem that existed at the time we changed that policy. But we are always willing to look at, you know, entrances and exits to rez halls, and the extent to which, you know, they cause problems or not. So if you have some specific instances, I would invite you to talk with Frank and Claude Rounds about those, and we'll take a look at those. But the issue about, you know, people piggybacking, people were piggybacking and doing it a lot without the residents in those residence halls being clear about who even lived in those residence halls. And so that's why we decided to take a step back from universal access, which really has not, was not in existence at Rensselaer for very long. And so Claude, I don't know if you have anything you want to say about it, or?
You described exactly where we are. We receive input on an ongoing basis, including input from the Student Senate, and that raises questions and asks us to review the access points within the resident halls. But the issue of universal access is a position that we remain strong on. There has not really been any significant evidence that suggests it isn't the safest approach. And clearly, the issue you talk about in terms of students piggybacking, we continuously to call to the attention and call for the assistance of all the students who live in the resident halls, because their compliance with the access requirements and their awareness of piggybacking is one of the most important safety features that we have. And if nobody pays attention to that, the technology doesn't have the same value.
Can I follow up really quickly with anecdotal evidence of a sort? So since freshman year, obviously, I have been able to get into those dorms, but I've never had an issue, I've, there's never been a time where I wasn't able to get into one, because people just don't question anymore if you don't, if you're sitting outside a dorm waiting for somebody to open the door, and-
Well, they weren't questioning before. And so, so we could talk all afternoon, and I'm trying to, and I do want to be respectful to you with your question, but in point of fact, you know, as Claude has said, you know, we'll always look at what the access points look like. But our students as well have to partner with us in terms of helping to look out for their own safety, because a lot of that starts with the students and with the residents who do live in those rez halls. And so, you know, it's a continuing discussion that we need to have, but for now, we'll continue to have the discussion, but we're not prepared at this point to change the universal access policy. Claude, Kurt, you want to?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, and thank you for the question related to computer science. Well, clearly, we're experiencing a large surge of interest in computer science, and this is a really good thing. It just, it speaks to the quality of our program, for one thing. The other thing I can tell you is that Chuck Stewart, the head of computer science, and I have been working together on ways of focusing and reducing the size of the lectures, for example. Right now, you will be experiencing a lecture size of between 30 and 40% smaller than it was just last year. And through the use of technology and how we arrange the course, the sort of innovations within the pedagogy there, we're able to deliver primary instruction now in the 29 student average sections, as opposed to primary instruction within a larger general section as it used to be. So between that, the introduction of a blended learning model, which we're working on right now about how to do that best, we'll be able to shrink down the larger components of the class and focus pedagogy on the smaller components, which are the sections which are also manned by an increased, largely increased number of programming mentors and TAs.
Are there other questions?
What impact do you believe the increased class sizes will have on the cost of attendance and the financial aid provided to current and incoming students?
Well, we try to provide as much financial aid as we can, and we'll continue to do that. Over the years, we've added significantly to the financial aid budget. We don't anticipate, nor do we intend, to have a diminution of the amount of financial aid that we offer per student. We look to increase what we're able to do. As I said earlier, a key focus of our capital campaign that we're in the quote-unquote quiet phase of, in fact, is focused on student financial aid. I don't see any more? Have I missed a, please?
I was wondering when the search for the director of the union would begin and what the process would look like going forward?
Well, the search for the director already has begun, and so I'll let the combination of Frank and Curtis Powell talk to you about what that process is.
Thank you for the question. Very important question and a very important position, and we're excited to move along with that process. So to echo Dr. Jackson, the process has begun. We've identified a national search firm that's going to help us in- We've identified a national search firm that's going to help us in the search process to identify candidates that we will ultimately bring to campus to meet with all the students and the rest of the Rensselaer community. This search firm has already done outreach with our grand marshal and the president of the union, because I feel it's important to find out what the student leaders in the union are looking for, what attributes are important to them and a new leader. And they're also setting up those interviews, same interviews, with direct reports to the director of the union, so our director of student activities, director of the Mueller Center, et cetera. So that's where we are in the process. I don't know if our VP for HR has anything to add. Okay, thank you.
Well, there's also training for how you interview. It doesn't, you know, say what you can or should ask, but there are ways to interview people to really get at, you know, the things that you want to get at. And so that, I know, is also happening to make those interviews as effective as possible. Some of us learn through experience, sometimes hard experience, how to interview, and so we're trying to make sure that everybody has as productive an experience as possible with that. Are there other questions? You know, the lights make it hard, and I just don't want to be sure I don't miss anyone. Okay, I'm not hearing a peep. So going, going. I'm about to drop the mic. Thank you very much.